Thank you, Jared. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Tricia Brown.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Erin Moran. Joseph Sisberger.
Here.
Robert McPherson.
Here.
Second item on the agenda is confirmation of open meeting compliance.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on 12/13. The final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on 12/12, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on 12/12. Just two special requests for the audience members. Please be sure you've signed in for accurate record-keeping with your name, address, and municipality. And those interested in participating in public comment, please provide the form prior to the agenda.
All right, next item on the agenda then is public comment. Do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment in the audience?
We have one, Maria Pat at 1,000 Wuxford Drive, Wanakee.
Probably not a real popular comment I'm going to make, but it does have to do with hiring somebody to take on the roles of planning Wanaboom. The volunteers have done this wonderful job for a number of years. They're pooped. I understand that volunteering for anything should never become a life sentence. I have done that. I have walked away, and you just sometimes have to do that. But I was also replaced by somebody who got paid when I did it for nothing. Not a good feeling. And so I don't think that $6,000 needs to be spent hiring anyone. If truly there is no one in this community who wants to move forward with it as a volunteer, we should drop it for the year and see what happens. My guess is if it matters enough, there will be volunteers the next year. And if it doesn't, that's $6,000 saved and neighborhoods with their parking free.
All right, thank you, Maria.
Can I ask, I know we're not supposed to move back and forth, but you said Wanaboom, do you mean Wanafest?
I think yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Are any other comments? Anyone online? You're online and you'd like to make a comment? You can raise your hand. Nope, no one's online? All right, all right, yes.
I just want to thank Carla and the other village staff that were involved in the creation of the new pet licensing stuff because it is so much smoother, so much easier than last year. And I know that Carla's having a whole lot less headaches this year, and I think that's wonderful.
Thanks, it seems to be going really smoothly. And we're super happy to have that software, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you, thank you for the work, thank you for bringing it up. Any other comments or announcements? All right, the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do we have anything we would like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda then is reports and announcements, parks and rec.
We didn't meet this month, nor did Public Works.
All right. Plan Commission met last week, and our primary activity was to review the responses to the RFP for the comp plan. We had four very good finalists and had some great conversations with them. We're delaying our decision until next month because it was a lot of material to weigh through. We wanted to really make sure we put a lot of thought into it. Thank you, Lauren, for all of the work that went into both organizing the RFP, reviewing them, and bringing some great people forward to do it, so thanks much. Joint Plan Commission was canceled. The Community Development Authority met last Wednesday, and we reviewed progress made on the Housing Task Force recommendations from 2017. Some of that material will probably be forwarded, and then we had a discussion about what might lie in the future for the next year or two for the Community Development Authority. Wanakee Fire.
The Wanakee Fire Board met on the 11th. We did go through, well, we attempted to go through some of the recommendations, and the village did submit some changes. Unfortunately, in a 3-2 vote, the Fire Board decided to table all changes to updating the district agreement, and instead only wanted to focus on the creation of a fire commission. And we took no action on the creation of a fire commission at that meeting. We also discussed a code of conduct as a result of some complaints in the community about firefighters and their conduct online, on social media specifically. And the chief indicated that we would see either next month or soon a code of conduct that would be applied to all the firefighters.
Thank you. Next up is Tourism Commission. Lauren, would this be you?
Yes, so it was a fairly short meeting. We went over some financials and discussed some potential marketing that we could do with, I think it's Discover Wisconsin is who we were talking with. No decisions were made, though.
Create Wanakee. And Erin is running late today, so.
Yeah, they talked about the 25 event schedule, reviewed upcoming events. One thing I noticed that there's, in partnership now, Create Wanakee has sort of put, brought the Groundlings Theater, which is a local kind of a startup theater group, under their wings. So they're involved. In fact, you just appointed the director, the founder of Groundlings Theater, to the WNS, or the Create Wanakee Board today. I would note that this Friday, yours truly and Jeff Scog will be in the produce area of the Piggly Wiggly for the grocery getaway from 5 to 7. And we're doing, we're doing holiday, a holiday tree craft. So you can buy your vegetables and make crafts with Todd and Jeff Friday afternoon.
All right.
There'll be a long line, I'm sure.
Get there early, huh?
Yeah. Honestly, probably yes, yeah.
Actually, I will add, it's actually really neat. The Piggly Wiggly also hires and pays entertainment, so there'd be holiday music. The stores really, and the owners have done a great job to kind of embrace the creative work that we're doing, and they've jumped right in and have been really giving and offering.
Yeah, it's been fantastic, thank you. EMS Commission.
EMS did not meet due to quorum.
All right, any other boards, committees, or commissions to report? All right, seeing none, any other announcements today? All right, seeing no announcements, then let's move on to business items. Item number one, discuss and take action on hiring a Wanafest Parade and Event Coordinator. This is page 28 of your packet. I forwarded this after a couple of times over the last years. I've either taught, last year I've either talked or met with members of the Wanafest Board about the event and some support that they're hoping that we could put behind the event. It has been probably one of our longest-standing summer traditions. It's, even though it comes two-thirds of the way through the summer, it is, you know, one of the kind of highlights, the parade is an enormous asset to the community. We've got a lot of childhood memories from the kids in the community that have gone up, grown up going to the carnival, and it provides some wonderful entertainment events. So when they, we met a couple of weeks ago, we talked about kind of what they needed. And there's some help with electrical equipment that we're hoping to extend to them later on in the year. But the parade itself is in need of a coordinator, and along with that, there is a need to provide some support to the event on, in the lead-up to it, in gaining sponsorships and in doing some of the event coordination, helping to man the food tents or run food and water to the food tents. So we talked about what that would look like. It's $6,000 is what they were requesting. To me, that felt like an amount of money that we could afford to do. It would be startup funds with the idea that the parade coordinator in future years would have raised enough money that that would support their salary. So before we discuss as a board, is there anybody from the Wanafest Committee that would like to speak? All right, when you take the podium, press the button on the mic until it's green, and then we'll be able to hear you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and talk about Wanafest. And one thing, Wanafest is a lot of our service clubs' major fundraiser. And I can speak for the Legion and the auxiliary. This is really the biggest thing we have, and that's how we give back to the community. And everybody who is on there gives back to the community. And the biggest problem we've had, we've always supported this, and we have paid for it back. I don't know when we started, but I was a past president, and at that time, we had someone who was doing it. And it worked out well. There was a lot of items, it's not just the parade. It's the sponsorship, as you had already had said some of the things, sponsorship. And we are working on doing a really good position description for the coordinator. So it's fundraising, publicity, the grounds, food tent, entertainment, busing and safe ride, parade. They assist the executive board, and they come to all the meetings, the executive board meeting as well as the Wanafest meeting. And so we're putting a little lot into this, and it's, we're starting off, we said 6,000 because of the way we're putting it all together on this coordinator's position. But it's truly needed, and we've had some bad years. You know, the one year with the storm, and last year with the splash pad, which took up a lot of room. And then again, Sunday with the storm from the parade, which a lot of people didn't come to Wanafest. And I know some people say it's an old thing, but again, this is a major fundraiser. And the other thing, and Wanabooms is really tormenting us. And when she said Wanabooms, I'm sorry, your name, Mary Pat, Maria? I thought she was talking about Wanabooms, and I'm like, yes! Because that has affected us because it's two weeks before, and we do not participate in that. And I don't know if maybe if we were asked what we would do. I really don't know because Wanafest was our biggest fundraiser, and it is our majority of ours. We do not participate in other things, except for now, the chamber had asked us to come as the auxiliary to help with Light the Night, and we were selling hot dogs. So we really would like to express the need for this money, and it may not be forever, but right now, this has really been bad because of the years that we have gone through this. Thank you for listening to me.
Could you please state your name for the record? Thank you, Shirley, for coming tonight. So with that, let's open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to start? Nyla.
I just have a couple of questions. First one, where in the budget will this come from?
Obviously, it wasn't in the 2025 budget, so I would think we would probably have to use fund balance to pay for it.
Okay. And my other question is, you know, they're suggesting that this may not need to be budgeted, you know, long-term. I'm wondering if we should put it on a time, kind of a timeline or something, so we know and have a specific goal as to when the funds would no longer be available for this.
Yeah, so this is a one-time request.
Okay, but is there a possibility it would continue? You know, we, I guess to leave something open, I would like to have wording so it's specific rather than open.
Totally understandable, yeah, I'm agreeable to that, yeah. Other comments, Robert?
I like Wanafest and the parade, so I will start with that. I have actually, it was an interesting comment that Shirley made there about the impact of Wanaboom on Wanafest. I've always kind of wondered about that, so that was, it's an interesting statement because we are Wanaboom, and now we are looking at giving money to Wanafest because our own success has crowded out Wanafest. Having worked with multiple groups that need Wanafest for their annual funding and the importance of the fundraiser, that's kind of concerning to me. So I have no opposition to giving 6,000 for this. I just would maybe think we need to open up a conversation to see what that is because I don't think it should ever be the intent of the village to make it harder on these service groups that supports so many different people within the village.
Thanks for the comment, Joe.
I would pretty much mirror what Robert said. I'm not thrilled with giving the $6,000, but I understand that that's, if it's a one-time thing, I can be okay with that. If we're back here again next year having a similar discussion, one, I would hope that we're not, but two, I'd probably be far less likely to support it at that point.
All right, thank you, Joe. Sam?
I have no problem with giving them funding whatsoever. I'm glad that they came here and asked for the money because as some of the others have said, it's merited complaints to me over the years that we're giving all this money to Wanaboom, but we're basically letting Wanafest go to seed, and I don't think that's appropriate. So I'm glad that you all took the effort to come here and request the money.
And Tricia.
So long-term, bigger picture, if this is startup funding, just, and their goal is to raise 15,000, that additional money over and above the salary that's being paid, does that just go into just a Wanafest general fund? Does it go to the chamber? Like, what's that relationship look like?
It's a great question, yeah. Yeah, please, if you don't mind, yeah, then whoever's online can hear.
Hi, I'm Terri Teeter, and I'm the Treasurer of Wanafest. So the funding that we raise helps to put on the whole party. We usually spend around $30,000. That includes the parade, the porta-potties, the insurance, the, just what, all the things that go into running the Wanafest. So when we raise the money, it cuts, so the service clubs, it's run very differently from Walktoberfest. So the service clubs are responsible for each of their, everything on their own. Their food, they pay, they help pay for the tent rental. And so the sponsorship money goes to help offset all those costs. And the money that each of the service clubs collects during Wanafest, they report back to us, the executive board, the treasurer, and the whole executive board. And those costs, their net profit is, they're charged, whatever we don't collect in sponsorship funds is paid for back to Wanafest. And we keep a balance of $36,000 in our fund balance to fund next year's event, so.
That's helpful, thank you. Good, that's helpful, thank you. And the reason I ask, back in the day, when I started my career in River Falls, I was responsible, or the chamber was responsible for organizing River Falls Days, and it was a huge lift. So for, to think that that's all being coordinated on volunteers blows my mind a little bit, actually. So I'm fine with that, I just wanted the clarification for that reason, to understand where all of that shook out. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, then I will make a motion. I would like to move that we approve $6,000 to provide startup funding for a Wanafest coordinator to be hired and managed through the Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to add to what's the recommended motion, that this is a one-time dispersment.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for being here tonight, we appreciate it, yeah. And we look forward to being at Wanafest this summer. Excellent, next item on the agenda, discuss and take action on purchase of property located at 105 East Second Street. And Brian, we have several things that might go into closed session tonight, so do we want to present them all and then vote to close?
I would say, I don't, I don't think this will necessarily go to closed session. Do you want to maybe have the discussion and see?
Sounds good, yeah, so to you.
Yeah, so driving down Second Street the other day, my neck spun around when I saw the for sale sign in front of the Murphy Mill property, 105 East Second Street. The memo's in your packet at, on page 31. And then there's a, an aerial photo that depicts lot lines on page 32 of your packet. It's definitely a unique property with a lot of historical characteristics. It's kind of hodgepodged in to that portion of the village. It's adjacent to the village parking lot at Reef Park. And if you notice on the photo, the access road that connects to the parking lot from the south runs through the Murphy Mill property. And we do have perpetual right-of-way easements with that, with that property owner in exchange for the right to seven of the stalls that the village maintains on the public parking lot. So that's the current lay of the land. When I saw the property for sale, the first thing I thought about was possibly coming to a better, more permanent solution related to that point of access on the road. So today, Lauren and I met with Molly Murphy and her broker. I've known Molly and Jeff for a long time, her son Patrick was there. Jeff isn't able to be part of the active use of the property any longer. But my question for her, and what I wanted to share with you, was whether there is interest prior to her pursuing a sale to talk about modifications to the shape of the parcel and possibly parcelling off a portion. What did she, was she interested in entertaining that? She's not, she's interested in sale of the entire property. So that discussion with her wasn't, wasn't at all entering a, you know, a negotiation over price. We didn't discuss that, we confirmed that her asking price is 600,000. I can share that the current assessment on the property is 550. So what, what we want to discuss with you is whether you would like to have the village begin a discussion on potential purchase price negotiation with, with the owners. If so, we'll have a deeper discussion with them and come back to at a future meeting. But the main question is, is there interest, in this case, based on our initial discussion with her, on considering discussions about purchase of the entire site? Now, a good question is, what do we do with the rest of it? I would say that if it's the village's interest to retain a property like this as a historical element of our downtown, to have control of it and then be, I guess you could say, picky about who we sell it to or sell it with particular terms and conditions for maintenance of the property, the village could potentially be in that driver's seat if we did in fact own it. I'm definitely not interested in suggesting that we be landlords on a commercial building, but that's sort of the story. Again, I don't think closed session is necessary because I'm not asking you to negotiate, you know, suggest what to offer or whatever, rather just authorize staff to begin a deeper conversation with the owners.
All right, thank you. With that, what comments or questions do we have? Robert?
So, wow, voice-cracking. The two, there's currently two commercial tenants in there now, the Imaginary T and Rocks and Relics. Have they been told that, you know, they would need to vacate? I mean, I know lots of people that like both of those businesses, that's why I'm.
Yeah, Molly has been in conversation with both. She mentioned both when we spoke today, that they're aware of what's going on. And I don't know specifically the nature of their current leases. But yes, they're aware, and she's been in conversation. I did ask her if either of the current tenants have interest in purchasing the building. She said that they haven't indicated it as such. But she has had a couple of phone calls. Okay.
All right, Joe?
I want to clarify, there's the mill, and then there's the building behind. Is the building behind, it appears that it's still on this parcel.
It is, that was, I think, horse, horse stables at one time way back when, and now it's kind of storage.
Okay. That's the only question I've got for this moment.
Sam?
I don't have any objections with proceeding. I think even if we were to get the whole property, you know, it is a property that historically has had some, you know, difficulty maintaining longer-term commercial tenants. So, you know, it would give us opportunity to do some cleanup on the property and so forth, so I have no problem proceeding.
Tricia.
Yeah, I think it makes absolute sense for us to take a look at it just given its location in the downtown core and potential needs that we might have. So, yeah, all for that.
Nyla.
I agree with what's been said, and go ahead with it.
All right, I think we're all in agreement. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to direct staff and council to proceed with conversations, potentially into negotiations with the current property owner of 102, hold on.
105.
105 East Second Street.
I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll stand.
Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you. Next up, discuss and take action on proposed ordinance amending Section 3054 of the Wanakee Code of Ordinances regarding the appointment of a fire chief. And this is page 33 of your packet, if you're following along. And is that to you, Todd?
Yeah, I can, I can kick it off, but I can, I can sort of work together with our representatives on the, on the Fire Board as well. And Kristen, I know you've been involved in discussions there too. Certainly not, not a surprising memo for you, I don't think, because very clearly, probably, item number one on our recommendations I received from Robert Whitaker, our consultant we hired to review the department, was this issue of discrepancy in how the appointment of fire chief occurs and the lack of a statutorily required fire commission in working for the department, for the district, serving the district to assist in hiring, firing, and discipline matters related to their, to their staff. So I included selections from his study where they suggested the requirements. I also included the reference from the state statutes. And I consulted with, Brian and I chatted a bit again. He concurs with that recommendation from Robert Whitaker. Again, for the sake of those who are in the audience or watching, the statutes require that a village with a population of 5,500 or more citizens that's involved in a joint fire department create with those other municipalities a fire commission without option or alternative. So I think the first step, this is proposed as an ordinance amendment to clarify that issue within our own code, to make that clear because it doesn't, our own code doesn't reference that. From there, the village is in a better position to take additional steps in working with the district to resolve this issue. So that's the recommendation tonight, is that ordinance amendment, which was drafted by Brian Kleinemeyer.
All right.
There's a typo too, just on page, sorry, on page 35 right now, it says to be in one parentheses, it should be two in a parentheses, and then be in parentheses. So we'll make that change, if you adopt the change, we'll make that. And just so that you're aware, the existing language right now in the code in this Section 30-54 says, "The fire chief shall be appointed pursuant to the bylaws of the fire department," which I think is inconsistent with every, you know, the report that you received. The only other thing that I would say is, you know, if, if, if the village, if you adopt this ordinance amendment, it sounds like, based on Robert's report, that there have been some discussions with the Fire District Board on maybe trying to make some changes to other documents. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I would just say, this may not be the only change to our ordinance and to certain documents if this, if, assuming that we're able to move forward with getting the Fire District to agree to do a fire commission. But this is the most straightforward one, and I think the one that's most consistent with the report that was provided.
Okay. All right, so we'll do both discussions and questions. But Robert and Nyla, I wonder if you guys would want to kick us off on the discussion for this?
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, okay. So the background on this, as Todd has indicated, the McMahon report indicated that we should, because we are over 4,500 in population as a village, we should have a fire commission for the appointment of a fire chief, also for the confirmation of a fire chief's officers, and for manners related to disciplinary and things like that, should not be in the hands of the Fire Board. So for those that are unaware of how the village, or I'm sorry, of how the Fire Board is currently set up, the Fire District has one employee, that is the Fire Inspector. So the Fire District's authority, by their operating agreement, only indicates that you can, that the Fire Board can only handle disciplinary or oversight matters with their employee. Does not extend to the fire chief or to any individual firefighters within the Fire District. So part of the McMahon recommendations beyond the commission had to do with also changing that language so that firefighters should become employees of the district. that language so that firefighters should become employees of the district. Basically, it would be a significant change from how they do things today. The way that the fire just the fire fighter membership currently handles this is that they elect annually their own officers, and then they elect a fire chief. And their fire chief needs to be somebody that has some very specific credentials and time there. It's usually it's going to be whoever it is that's already on their officer corps. The reason that we're bringing this language tonight is because there is a normal process for the membership, that they would hold their elections in January. And based off of the fire board conversations on Wednesday night that did not go as successfully as we had hoped, it is the feeling of the other municipalities that they should be allowed, despite the fact that they know that there needs to be a fire commission for the appointment of another fire chief or even confirming. So, we're not even talking, I want to be very clear, we're not talking a paid fire chief. We're even talking if it's a volunteer fire chief, that they see no problem in allowing them to continue as is. And then they had kicked around the idea of saying, well, we should have an interim fire chief. Well, our operating agreement doesn't allow for the create, it doesn't allow for that. That's beyond the scope and authority of the fire board. So, it would have kept things at status quo. So, step one for the village in any action, and I believe this is the discussion that Todd and Brian had, is that we have to clean up our ordinance in order to match where it is that we want to go. Whether or not the other municipalities agree with that, we can't control their actions. We can only control our own. So, this would give us the latitude to say that, you know, we, as participants in this district, our ordinance states that it needs to be a fire commission that does this. We do this before the vote in January, and therefore, if if any additional steps would need to be taken, we would have the right to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. Nyla?
One point that I would like to bring up is that I feel that we, meaning Robert and I, and Kristin was also a representative at one point when Robert was couldn't attend a meeting, we have worked in good faith with the other municipalities. And when it came to approving the operational budget, Kristin and I voted to approve the operational budget because we were told that the other municipality representatives would work with us on 10 points. At the last meeting on the 11th, we were basically at a standstill. And this really concerns me because there is an issue pertaining to conduct. And when I received an information, a question pertaining to code of conduct, I contacted village staff and the fire department to see what we had as far as such a document, which we, there is not one. And I feel that that has to be a priority. And according to what I understand, a code of conduct has to be done through a commission. And that is one of my biggest concerns, because we need personnel that we know who are going to represent the fire district in a positive way so that all residents of the fire district and those coming into the fire district to visit or whatever feel safe and protected. So, at this point, I feel that we have negotiated in good faith and done what we could do. And I'm not willing to continue with the standstill.
Thank you, Nyla. So, questions we have? Sam?
I don't have any questions, but I just think it's ridiculous that the fire department does not want to follow the law, which is really clear here and part of why we voted to approve the budget. So, it makes perfect sense, all the sense in the world, to be voting in favor of this because it is our obligation to be in compliance with the law.
Thank you, Sam. Tricia?
Maybe just to clarify, for me, we, I agree with Sam. Like, this makes absolute sense for us to move forward with on our part. But what does that mean for the overall picture? Or the overall?
I think it's, this change is really to be, I think, consistent with the report that I believe everyone agrees with. I mean, I've been at a couple of meetings where the report was started or discussed. I think it makes a pretty clear statement, you know, makes a number of recommendations regarding how the fire department is operated, creating a fire commission is one of them. This is essentially an update to our code to be consistent with, I think, where the village board is at. I, you know, I think it goes back to the statement that Robert made, that we can't control what the other members of the fire district do. I, you know, I don't know, my understanding is that the fire district has its own legal counsel, which it should, oh, it doesn't.
They do not.
The fire district should have its own legal counsel. And I know that there are people out there who specialize in, you know, police and fire commission and fire districts and things of that nature. So, where it goes from here, I think, is still open-ended. I mean, I think Robert and Nyla probably are going to still going to have to pursue what they've done already at the fire district meetings. I was really hoping that there was an attorney for the fire district, because I was going to offer to speak with that individual. And but I think this is just the first step, so that now, when we're talking to people, and no one's going to be able to come back and say, well, your your own code says, you know, do it through the bylaws here, we're making the change to the state statutes. As I mentioned, though, before, just keep in mind that if somebody comes up to you and says, well, there's another spot in your in your code, there probably is some inconsistencies. And I think as as the village goes through this process and hopefully reach some type of resolution, that then, once that resolution is reached, then we can go back and look at the code and say, okay, here are the other spots where we need to make some changes consistent with that.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tricia. Joe, what questions do you have?
I'm very much like Sam. I don't think there's really a whole lot of questions here. I think it's a matter of what we should do, what we need to do. And kind of like Brian said, yeah, there's probably other inconsistencies that are in there, but we need to take the steps. So, I support it.
All right. Being compliant with state law is really important. So, I will move to adopt the ordinance amending section 3054 of the Wannakee Court of Ordinances regarding appointment of a fire chief.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. And thank you, Robert and Nyla, for your work on this. This has been, you've done a great job. It's been a lot of work. Discuss and take action, item number four, on proposed second amendment to development agreements, the brewery expansion project, tid nine, and warehouse expansion project, tid nine, related to octopi projects and facilities. I believe this is to you, Todd.
So, hold on. We're going to be doing this all at once, because I have to recuse. You know, are we going to be doing all the closed sessions at once? Or how are we going to do this?
So, I guess, at least on number five, I can provide a little bit of update. But, yeah, to Sam's point, I think what we're going to want to do is, you know, each one has to have its separate vote. Sam would recuse himself from item number four. My understanding is that's the item that we're going to discuss in closed session initially. So, then Sam could go wait, and then when we get done discussing item four, then one of us would go grab Sam, bring him back in, so he can participate in the remainder of the discussions.
Okay. So, do we see all the, we do the one at a time, come out of closed session and go to five?
You can you can do that if you'd like, or you essentially, you can have a separate vote on, you know, reading the information, going into closed session, four, five, six, seven, and then you just go into closed session once and you come out. Now, I don't know, I don't anticipate that there's going to be any action taken on any of the closed session items that where we would come back into open session and take action.
All right. So, to do the vote, then, if we do it all at once, which feels like the most efficient way.
Okay. Well, Todd just said that maybe 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 you might you might reconvene on number six into open session.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think what you can do is do four, read it, have the vote to go into closed session. I would, once you get to five, I do, I can provide a little bit of information for the public, if you'd like.
Okay. All right. So, four, discuss and take action on proposed second amendment to development agreement to brewery expansion project, tid nine, and warehouse expansion, tid nine, related to octopi. So, the village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So, first item, do we have a motion to go in closed session for item number four?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Joseph Zissberger?
Yes.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Recusing. So, is that abstention or just you don't record anything?
I just, I think we just want the record to reflect that you're recusing yourself from this this agenda item.
All right. And then we'll go to item number five, discuss and take action on town of Westport notice of intent to incorporate petition.
So, I can, before, maybe before you read the closed session, I can give you the update?
Please do.
So, I think, as we've talked about before, the incorporation process has multiple steps to it. The first step is a hearing before the circuit court. And so, we held, and and the, it was held on December 4th, Dane County Circuit Court. The judge did an excellent job because she really at the at the front end made very clear that what was occurring at the circuit court level was very procedural and, I would say, limited in nature as to the criteria that she was going to be considering. The parties that appeared were obviously the town of Westport, and then Village of Wannakee, Village of Forest, City of Middleton, City of Madison, and the Wannakee Community School District. Ultimately, the court, correctly so, signed, has now signed an order to have this matter move on to the incorporation review board. To be clear, if you recall, from a timing standpoint, we did recently, at one of the meetings in November, annex some land along County Highway Q. And so, the order that's been sent to the incorporation review board has removed that property that we annexed from the from the incorporation petition. And Westport agreed with that. Obviously, their joint planning commission, in fact, recommended approval of that annexation. So, at some point in time in the future, it has not happened yet, there is going to be a triggering event. In other words, when the petition is formally sent to the incorporation review board and a statutory fee is paid by the town of Westport, at that point, then, a 30-day time period is triggered for any of the parties to request a hearing before the incorporation review board. That time period has not yet been triggered, so I don't think that we really need to talk about it. And, you know, I don't think anyone has made a determination yet as to whether or not someone's going to request a hearing, because I know there have been discussions among Westport with Middleton and Madison and DeForest, and we have a meeting scheduled with Wannakee and Westport on Thursday this week.
All right. So, in that spirit, the village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.851G for the purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the village who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village with respect to litigation in which it is involved or likely to become involved. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session for item number five?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Roll call vote, please, Carla.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Joseph Zissberger?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Stay.
You can say yes.
You can say yes.
I'm not taking into what we're doing.
Oh, so this is a motion to go into closed session to discuss the incorporation petition that's been filed in circuit court by Dane County.
All right. And you're yes.
Yes.
All right. Item number six, discuss and take action on administrator review compensation and benefit adjustments. Do we don't need a presentation on this? Can I just read the statement?
Yep.
The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C for the purpose of considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session on item number six?
I'll move to go into closed session for item number six.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please, Carla.
Joseph Zissberger?
Yes.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
All right. And then last item, item number seven, discuss and take action on matters regarding the Wannakee Area Fire Protection Agreement and Wannakee Area Fire Protection Operating Agreement. With that, do we have a presentation or comments?
I think maybe, my understanding is, some of the comments that we've made on previous agenda items, where I think we acknowledged that some of the language in the agreements isn't necessarily consistent with the report that we received or the Wisconsin statutes. And so, a discussion of, you know, what what would you, what would the board want either staff or the other district board members from the village to to approach the board on maybe changes to the agreement? And so, I think, and that's certainly, you know, obviously, terms and conditions of a document that already exists, so it's a valid basis to convene in closed session.
All right. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene in open session and take action on the closed session items. Do we have a motion to go into closed session on this?
Motion to go into closed session for item number seven.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call vote, please, Carla.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Tricia Brown?
Yes.
Robert McPherson?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Joseph Zissberger?
Yes.
All right. With that, we have four items for closed session, and we will go into closed session at 6:47, as soon as the room is clear.[1764.28]